All right, good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for the town of Southwick for Tuesday, May 12th, 2020. Russ Fox is here as chairman. We have Doug Mogul as vice chairman. Joe Dede is a member of the board. We have Carl Steinhardt, our chief administrative officer. Also have our director of DPW, Randy Brown.
And we also have the deputy fire chief with us.
And we also have our deputy fire chief. Let me begin by reading the following. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30A18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the town of Southwick Select Board is being conducted both at Town Hall and via remote participation by some or all members. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. Despite our best efforts, if we are not able to provide for real-time access via Zoom conference call platform, we will post a recording of the meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. All right. The first thing I'd like to do is ask everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. First thing would be public comments. That would be anyone that is not on the agenda that would like to make a statement to the Southwick Select Board. This would be your opportunity to make that statement. I ask if there's anybody that would like to make a public comment, please state your name and address. Is there anyone here at this particular time that would like to do that? Seeing none, we're going to begin the meeting with an update on the COVID-19 discussion and actions. Mr. Steinhardt.
Mr. Chairman, so there's been, obviously, in the last day or so, the governor has come forward with an update on how the reopening plan is going to work. There were stages. I've sent you that information in the Situation Report that comes out from MEMA every evening. And obviously, it's going to be a phased-in approach depending upon what sector and segment your business that you're in within the economy. And in viewing that with the health director, you know, we found that to be still unclear in terms of our type of operations. So I've asked her to develop a plan in terms of like a framework for us to circulate with department heads to see what that might look like for our town operations. So she's soliciting input on that now. We're still going to have issues where the Council on Aging is going to still continue to be scaled back in terms of the elderly coming into the building. They're still going to be bringing meals out to them in terms of drive-by. They're not going to be, generally, their classes would be underway now and they'd be ending in July, so there probably won't be any classes. And then also, I've checked in with my peer group images under these listservs, and I can tell you that at this point in time, most town halls are not going to be opening until they get clearer guidance. And of course, the beginning of that is going to be next Monday. Services are going to be scaled up by more staffs in buildings for online and phone transactions, just not in person. So even at this point in time, our health director's not advocating for the lobby to open up for a while. So that's going to have to be evaluated, and she's going to have to, you know, get to a comfort level to see what the, you know, protocols and public health information is going to look like. But at least we'll have something more from this reopening group by next Monday. Additionally, in terms of today, the governor's briefing is that he filed a billion-dollar spending bill to address the COVID-19 responses and to help cities and towns. This is going to help qualify for the FEMA reimbursements as well as other federal CARES Act revenues to the states. And of course, you know, that was passed a number of weeks ago, and those funds are just finally started to be distributed out to the states. That's all separate than the SBA business funding, which ran out that had to be renewed. So that's where that stands in terms of what's coming in from the outside. We continue to prepare with signage being ordered for our different buildings, Plexiglas dividers, masks, and things of that nature. And I think one of our big things is going to be to see how the special election goes next Tuesday during the day, because that's a 13-hour day, and we're going to have a lot of activity coming through Town Hall in terms of people who won't take advantage of early voting or absentee voting. So that's going to be a good test for people. And then next week, we'll also get a sense of more people back in the office and exercising the social distancing as well as using the Plexiglas divider. So we need to handle getting everybody up to speed internally within the Town Hall. And then the library is creating a separate plan that they're going to be going over with the health director this week in terms of what they will do commensurate with other area libraries, because, you know, they want to be on the same page together so that no one library opens earlier than another one, and everybody goes to one library that's open and not the ones in their own communities. So still got a ways to go, but that's where we stand at the moment.
Was there some reason that Tammy Spencer or health director, what was the reasoning behind not opening up the Town Hall portion that we had at one point had opened, Town Clerk's area?
Well, that, still, when it comes time to do that, it'll probably be that that opens up first for those transactions, but I don't believe we're there yet. And obviously, the department head's got to be dealing with the elections, and we also have to be getting ready for another election in June, as well as the different payment cycles of things will be mid-June also.
Yeah.
We're going to be taking our guidance from the health director as she goes around and develops that plan with people.
No, my only point being is we're going to have a special election on Tuesday, where we're going to have people coming through the Town Hall, through the auditorium, and exiting out the back. So I was just wondering what her thinking was, why we couldn't.
Well, because we can be opening. Well, you wouldn't do it for just one day during the election, Russ. If she's not ready to do it.
No, no, I realize, yeah.
The election.
Okay.
So, and I'm sure we'll have more definitive from Tammy in, you know, several days.
Okay. Any other questions from the board members? Okay. Then we'll go on to the next thing. It's concerning lake management, the ramps, launch fees adjustment. Did everybody get the letter that was sent to the Office of Fishing and Boating Access from Mr. Grinnell's? You want to go over that, Carl?
Yes. What you're looking at before you now is, over the past couple of months, Dick has been discussing with Doug Cameron, who's the acting director of Fishing and Boating Access, the fee schedule, and he's been going all the last 15 to 20 years of operational expenses. And now at the point where things are starting to get tight, and the $5 launch fee hasn't been adjusted in 20 years. And you've, and over this course of time, your labor rates have been increasing because your minimum wage rates, as well as your boat ramp attendant rates for the people, the cost of vendors and supplies to run these facilities that we have. And of course, we don't, as a general rule, use any taxpayer dollars for these. They're basically supposed to be self-sufficient. So Dick had given all the information to the acting director, and he has supported and approved of an $8 daily fee for the launch fees.
Okay, but Dick is asking them to change that to $10?
Not, well, he was trying to make the case for 10, and if you look at the document I've given you, he's approved $8.
Okay.
If you look at the right-hand side of that document.
All right. Hopefully, they'll have plenty of ones for change.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's always an issue when those types of things happen, but at the end of the day, you need to make sure that you're bringing in sufficient funds for the people that use those facilities, and they are regulated by the Commonwealth. We just manage it under a owner agreement with them, signed by yourselves.
All right.
We do have boat ramps that are better than most communities that have launched facilities.
And the rule still stands only Massachusetts residents at this time?
That is the, that's the guidance that the state has sent Dick and the chief of police.
Okay. Has the news media been informed of that? Have we sent out a press release to make sure? I'm seeing a shaking of no. Is it possible that we could have Lake's management and/or the chief of police send out a press release to that effect? And maybe we can head it down to the town of Southfield and ask them to see if their news media won't put it out there since they're a border community that works with us?
Sounds like they're not going to.
I'd be happy to call Dick personally.
Thank you, Hope.
Sounds like they're not going to enforce it anyways. Sounds like they're not going to enforce it anyways.
Right now, Mr. Chairman, the issue that you're dealing with is the launch fee, or that's the item on the action, Jim.
But, well, he's correct, but the other point is, is that folks that live along the lake in Connecticut, they can launch their boats from their own docks. It's bringing boats to the boat ramp that it's supposed to be mass plates. So to be clear, if you own a house in Southfield that has lakefront, you're good to go, right? It's only when you launch your boat.
And they have, they have other marinas they can access along the water, private ones.
I was just trying to see if we couldn't get the word out there to avoid any conflicts on a warm Saturday or Sunday. All right, you're saying we need to take a vote on this? $8, Carl?
Yep, because that's, you are, even though Dick submitted the documentation for Doug to look at, at the end of the day, you are the entity that signs the contract with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, not the AdHart Board.
Okay, I need a motion?
Hold on. So have they reviewed, has LMC reviewed that, or will we just go with Dick Grinnell's opinion?
No, 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 no.
Because LMC hasn't met.
Correct. And he, they are meeting Thursday, and this has come through their members in the past because of the, the amounts of dollars, because I told them they're meeting this week, and we have elections next week, so we can't meet on Tuesday. So, and they want to have this in place.
Because they're carrying it as an agenda item for Thursday. I don't want to get out in front, and then we get, we get all kinds of flack that we jumped the gun on the Lake Management Committee, and we did all this out on our own. I'll gladly make the motion because it makes sense. It goes into the revolving account, which they're struggling to keep at a positive balance, but I don't want to be out in front of the, of the Lake Management Committee and then, you know, hear from them that we, you know.
Well, you can certainly word that in such a way that, with the concurrence of the committee through their vote, but it was their members who submitted these documents to the state for this approval.
So moved.
That was Doug Mogul making the motion. I need a second.
Joe Dede will second. I wish there was a smaller rate for guys with canoes and paddle boats, though, but now's not the time to bitch about it.
Well, not after 20 years.
We'll do a roll call vote. Russ Fox, yes?
Joe, do you want to, do you want to bring another motion to the floor?
No, because we'll have to live with the hearing about it for the next three damn weeks. But I don't know if we could do that, if we could separate it. It just makes sense. You get canoeers, paddle boaters, so me and you, because we're friends, Doug, we show up with our two paddle boats, or whatever they're called, right? The 16 bucks to put them in the water. You know what I mean? It's not a motorized boat that, you know, with a 12-pack of beer, and we're spending the day on the lake. We're going out for three hours of kayaking, and now it's going to cost us 16 bucks. Just seems awful high, and I get it, I'm not.
This is why, this is why this should go in front of LMC first. I mean, if you, if you wanted to make that motion to leave kayaks and canoes that don't use, that aren't on a trailer to five bucks, I'm game.
Right. I would like to make that motion, if that's possible, Mr. Fox, without upsetting the apple cart.
I'm going to suggest, I'm going to suggest that we go back to what Mr. Mogul originally said. We need to hear a recommendation from LMC first.
So we'll table this for two weeks.
How about this? Would you accept a motion to have the chair sign off so that they can implement it for, I'm sure they want to do it for the weekend, or that we?
I don't, he didn't give me the impression he was going to do it for this weekend.
Okay, then why don't we just get a recommendation from LMC before we take a vote?
So moved. We don't need a motion then, do you? We'll just take back, table the vote.
Okay.
Should I send a letter to them with my opinion?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, the next thing is a culvert replacement municipal assistance grant application. Randy Brown, you want to fill us in?
Let me unmute myself first. Okay, so, yeah, we have an application here, which I filled out through the municipal assistance grant program, culvert municipal assistance. So there's a culvert on Klein Road, which is in need of replacement. So there's actually two culverts on Klein Road. The bigger one is not the one I'm thinking of. This is the one that's actually closer to the South Loomis intersection, about 500 feet away. So it's a three-foot diameter corrugated metal culvert. It's deteriorated and likely undersized, and it seems to be up the alley for what this grant program is looking for. So we put together the application, and we're asking for your signature on it. We're asking for $85,000, which will cover the design fees. And then at a later date, whenever we can find funds for construction, we can address that then. This grant program only has a max of $200,000, which would not be enough to do the design plus construction, so, which is why we broke out the design up through this application.
All right, thank you, Randy. Discussion, a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the grant application.
That was Doug Mogul. I need a second.
Joe Dede, second.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, yes?
Doug Mogul, yes.
Joe Dede, yes.
All right, thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
The next thing I have is to authorize the chairman to sign the town owner CDBG agreement for a residence and our house on 7 Rennie Avenue in an amount of $21,000.
Need a motion for that?
I do.
There you go. Doug Mogul.
Doug Mogul made that motion.
Joe Dede, second.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, yes?
Doug Mogul, yes.
Okay. And that, of course, is we're working with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Those are community block grant funds. This is a normal procedure that we do, working with homeowners in the town of Southwick. The next thing I have is Southwick Fire Department EMS staffing actions, and we have the deputy chief, deputy chief, welcome, and you want to give us some background on this?
Certainly. So with some of the, obviously, the restrictions that have been imposed by the declaration of a state of emergency, one of the things that can't be halted was the civil service process. And part of that process is the physical abilities test, which is a required element for newly hired firefighters. They're supposed to be able to pass the physical abilities test in partnership with their physical exam. We haven't been able to conduct the PAT that is referred, that's commonly referred to as, for almost three months now. And we did make the exception for provisional hires with the understanding that once the PAT came online, that we would go ahead and get everybody through the, through the system. In that time, we've also gone and offered provisional employment to a young man by the name of Neil Colburn, who's been with the department for almost a month now. And he's working only as a paramedic at this time. However, he does have interest in becoming a full-time firefighter. We had received an application from Neil during the actual advertisement process, and he came in as a very good candidate. So that's part of the discussion as well, too, as well as Stephen Backman, who was offered employment, still unable to complete the PAT, was brought in as a provisional hire. So what I'm suggesting is that the civil service has allowed for a 60-day extension, a grace period, if you would, for all departments, towns, cities to go ahead and forego the PAT to a later date and make arrangements within the town to have arrangements for the testing as well as consequences should the candidate not pass, or just the, that would just roll into their probationary period once it was completed. So the PAT is typically done once a week. There is a practice session usually the week before, then you go and you take the PAT. The hope is that this will be up and running by June 1st. That was the date that was given to us by the people that run civil service, but there's going to be a huge backlog there as well, too. So my guess is that this is probably going to take more than 60 days, but civil service has said within 60 days, this would be an allowable process. So what I'd like to do is go ahead and have the Select Board consider waiving the requirement for the PAT as a condition of hire at this time, although it's not a formally structured port of it, part of it. It is part of the advertisement for the jobs, and at this time, we'd like to make the standard for all hiring going forward. They do complete the PAT, and they do complete the Massachusetts Fire Academy. So both of those things are currently going to be delayed, but we need staffing. So what I'd like to do is, just, you had the policy review I had sent to Carl, he sent to you. If there's any questions on it, to answer the questions, Fred Dupree looked it over. He made one recommendation that was changed in the revised version that had a MOU, would need to be formulated with the town in the event that we extended any of the probationary periods. Right now, would be no need to extend the probationary periods. I think we can get everything done within the normal one-year probationary period, but it serves us two purposes. One is to get Stephen Backman through the complete full-time position which he was hired for, so that he would be able to earn at that rate, and then also to get Neil on board, even though it may seem like we're not going through the full process, it is allowing us to get him going forward. The other part of the process for Neil would normally be a formal interview with the fire department and then an aptitude test, as well as going forward with the Select Board for an interview and hopefully an appointment. Neil has proven himself to be a very strong candidate, outstanding young man, doing a great job so far, very good fit within the department, and I would like very much for the Select Board for, to consider us being able to offer him full-time employment and through the interview process, but also for us to, because of the restrictions we're underwriting, forego the aptitude test and the actual formal interview with the personnel in the fire department and just put him forward to the Select Board as a candidate for full-time employment.
All right, I'm reading over your letter, chief, and I think what we can do is, I'm going to suggest we do this, two different motions.
Okay.
The first, Stephen Backman, as I'm reading this, you're looking, requesting a 60-day extension, is that correct?
For the PAT, correct.
For the PAT.
Yep, he would, that first one with the civil service extension of 60 days grace period, which a lot of other towns have taken advantage of to put somebody on as a full-time employee, he would then have the benefits of full-time employment.
All right, so I need a motion for that unless there's discussion?
Just a quick question. So that if he, at some point, he does still have to complete the PAT as a condition of employment? So his probationary period would continue until he passes the PAT?
The way it's worded right now is he would have, within the, well, within the 60 days, he would have to complete the PAT. Once it's, once it's, they give it 60 days grace period, so let me back up a little bit, that's not correct. So with, after the 60 days, once everything is up and running, he would have to complete the PAT. That would happen during his probationary period. If for some reason he didn't pass the PAT, the department would have the discretion to send him for a second attempt. Most are very successful in the second attempt, if for some reason they're unsuccessful on the first, but it is a condition of employment. So if he's unable to pass the PAT, then he would have, then he would be, under the provisionary, probationary period, he would be relieved.
And the probationary period's a year anyway, right?
Yeah.
Right, and that's, that's under the union contract.
I'll make that motion, Doug Mogul.
Need a second?
Yep, so how many attempts, and I'm not, I'm assuming they're going to pass the PAT, but we give them two, three, four, five attempts, is, I mean, just humor me.
Boy, the unwritten rule of thumb is you get three, three pulls at the ring, if you would. So I would think that.
Because I hate dead weight. Dead weight doesn't work, and you know that. I'm with you. Free, that's fine. That's the norm, free shots.
Yeah.
Okay, because don't come back here, don't come back here and say, hey, buddy, you know what I mean? We understand each other?
Absolutely.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion made and second. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, yes?
Doug Mogul, yes.
Joe Dede, yes.
Okay, all right, now we're going to do a second, a different motion on Neil, and this is, what you are looking for is for us to interview? Is that right?
That's, yep.
Okay.
Do you want that in person?
I'm sorry, Carl?
Does he want that in person?
I, I know that the building inspector was interviewed online. It seemed to be successful. I think this is something that, you know, I'll leave it up to you. If you'd like to meet him in person, I'm sure we can make arrangements for that. I think he would be comfortable with either or.
All right, I guess we don't need a motion. We, would the board consider interviewing Neil next, at our next meeting?
I would. I just, do you, do foresee any issue with, you, you had a very good panel that interviewed candidates last time. I understand with all that, what's going on. Do you foresee any issues with any members of that panel objecting to this piece going forward?
I don't. I was on that panel.
Mate, and I spoke to two other members that were on the panel. They had no objections either.
Very well. I think that'd be a great idea, then.
Joe? He's working now, right?
Yes, he is.
Russ and I hired him a month ago.
Wonderful.
Under a temporary.
Great.
Agreement of agreement that we did with the fire union.
Are you done? Can I talk, Carl? You done? All right. So I suggest Doug and Russ take two minutes next week. Maybe we can swing by the fire department and just meet him, just so we get a little one-on-one for a few minutes, just so, Zoom is nice, but I really think we're leaving something out of the deal, and I, you know, he's working anyway, so we'll talk to Rich and find out when he's on and just, you're in a bunker, I get it, Doug, but me and Russ would get that.
I can do it. No worries.
No worries, okay.
All right, that's a good suggestion, Mr. Dede.
Just so you get the note for two minutes.
All right. And we'll schedule that interview for next week, Carl, our next meeting, next meeting.
I'll set that his schedule, so everybody knows when he's on duty.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, there was a third item.
And thank you for sending his other stuff, deputy chief. I appreciate it, having the chance to review that information ahead of time.
Good.
Okay, there was a third item in the letter. Are we going to be addressing that, chief?
That pertains to Josh Gerard at this time, and I would like just to give you a quick update because he's, obviously, Josh is very interested in pursuing full-time employment with us. He's working as a provisional EMT firefighter right now, and the goal, obviously, is to get Josh ready with paramedics so that he's ready to take the next step. His school has remarkably kept pace. What they've done is they've taken all of the What they've done is they've taken all of the didactic portion and kind of front-loaded it. And then they're going to be doing the practical portions afterwards. And they're making arrangements to do that on a one-on-one basis through the school. And they've only had to postpone clinicals for about 30 days, which has been very good news. So the clinical set at Greenfield Community College, where Josh is attending, as well as Kerry Bradbury, is a little more demanding than the state mandate. So it's looked at by hours. So I'll just give you an example. If the state says you need 100 hours, Greenfield typically says you need 200. So there might be, according to the students, a little bit of relaxing on that. So he would certainly stay on pace to probably be, completed with all of his clinicals by the end of the summertime and moving into his ride time in fall. So he'll definitely be on schedule. And at that point, at the end of the summer, I'd like very much to see where we stand. But that would mean extending his current provisional offer up until, I believe I put in there for August, to August 31st. This initially was 120 days, but all things being equal, I still think there's too many variables to know what's happening with staffing and what's involved in getting people online and schooling and all those things. So I'd like to consider just extending that to August 31st. We don't necessarily need to do that now, but it would just kind of put it all together as a good clean package at the end of the night.
Would that require a supplemental memorandum of agreement with the local fire union?
Perhaps it would. The one was for 120 days. This would actually have a date on it. So the other one was up to 120 days. So we could certainly say, we can either make it a day or a date, however they want, however they'd handle it. They've been very cooperative on this matter, which has been great, very easy to work with. And they're excited to have the staff in the building because it just makes us a better organization.
Yeah, when you get a chance, just look at the current MOA and go over it with Brian Schneider and just get that consensus.
Of course.
Important for us to remember, the reason why we're doing this right now is because we've lost several full-time career people to other municipalities that had short-staffed themselves. So those communities have already gone through and, you know, gotten other communities like us. So we train them well, we lose them, and then they go off to other locations.
Exactly.
All right, what's...
So I think...
What's the pleasure of the board? Either hold off on this or make a motion, contingent on approval with the fire union?
I think we got a little bit of time on this one because it's not till August that the 120 runs out, right? Or when does the 120 run out?
That I believe would be the second week of July. I don't have it right in front of me, so...
I just have, I'd like to have the union on board. And I don't think they would be opposed, but we're going to be meeting in at least two weeks. We'll be in great shape.
All right, why don't we carry that on our next meeting?
Because he, and to Josh's credit, he's doing everything, including a global pandemic, is doing everything he said he was going to do. So to his credit, right? God bless, right? And we're going to live up to what we said we would do, too.
Good.
Rich, anything else you'd like to add, how things are going?
Well, things, I dare say things have calmed down. I think more than anything, we've learned to work within the new mindset and the new protocol, the new requirement, and the sudden changes by the state and by the Department of Public Health have slowed. So it's made our job a lot easier. And again, people became very comfortable and confident in the work we were doing, and that made it a lot easier. But everybody's been doing an outstanding job. It would have been very easy for people to shy away from this, and no one did. Everybody met it headstrong and did a great job with everything, so. At the end, when it's all over with, which, you know, who knows when that'll be, I think it would be wise for the town to recognize some of the individual efforts as well, too.
The lessons that are going to be, the lessons learned here, you may be using on the next outbreak.
Oh, yeah. Well, hopefully that's another 100 years like the last one.
Amen.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Rich.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The next thing I have on the agenda is the approved Pioneer Valley Planning Commission invoice, number one, for fiscal '19. And it looks like it's in the amount of $27,179.32. And this is for administering a community assistance program. Need a motion?
Need a motion for the chair to sign?
Uh, correct.
Doug Mogul, motion for the chair to sign.
Actually, it's everybody, Doug.
All right, well, then I'll make the motion.
Joe Diddy, second?
Okay, roll call, vote. Russ Fox, yes?
Doug Mogul, yes.
Joe Diddy, yes.
Okay. That's everything I had listed there. I'd like to acknowledge payroll warrant number 2023, dated 5/11/2020, in the amount of $216,607.13. I need a motion to approve the open session minute, excuse me, dated 5/5/2020.
Doug Mogul, so moved.
Joe Diddy, second?
Roll call, vote. Russ Fox, yes?
Doug Mogul, yes.
Joe Diddy, yes.
All right, passes. All right, dates to remember. And we've already talked a little bit about it. And everybody think on a code-red call is the special election for state senator, which is next Tuesday, the 19th, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. People can do it by absentee, by mail, or they can come to town hall. Carl, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're entering through the front and leaving through the back.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And we have adequate staff and protection for our staff. We're asking everybody to be patient and work with our staff so that we can exercise our right in the democracy to vote.
And we will be borrowing people from other departments to staff it.
Okay. Good. We also have a local election, which will be in June, June 9th. That's a Tuesday, same hours. And then we'll have our special town meeting and annual town meeting the following Tuesday, on June the 16th. And that committee will be working with the town moderator, Joe, Carl, and Chief Bishop, and Director of Health, Tammy Spencer. Is there anybody else that works with that group?
There will, there'll be other people, probably Bob Johnson. I mean, I hope to, draft warrants to you. I have been coil town council, putting together the draft annual because that had to reflect some of the votes taken last week at the CPC meeting. And also the special town meeting warrant, which for year-end transfers. And that's something that Laura and Mel and Carol are working on.
Good. All right, the next thing I have on our dates to remember is we will be having a budget work session with the finance committee tomorrow, Wednesday, the 13th, at 5:30 p.m. Going to old business. The first thing is Southwick Fire Department Station project bid recommendations. We're going to discuss that with the finance committee before taking any action. Was that the plan?
Yep, that is correct. You would need to have consensus on whether or not you're going to go forward with a bond being prepared by the bond council in a warrant article. So you really want to make sure before any of that happens, you've gone with the finance committee. And then if there's consensus to do that, those documents will be drafted. They'll be put on the warrant, and it'll go before the voters. And then to award a bid to the apparent low bidder based upon the recommendation by Russo Bar.
Okay. I probably should ask the deputy chief, but if we had any additional leaks with the rain that we've had over the past week?
Yes, you have.
I saw some photos.
Yes, there were some photos that were sent about two weeks ago from the chief.
Okay. All right, next thing is Mass DOT, Cogamon Road. Randy, do we have another meeting set up with those gentlemen yet, or it's still in the air?
You're on mute there, Randy.
Randy's muted. I mean, you could...
My bad.
You're unmuted, Randy, you're fine.
There you go, thanks, sorry about that. Yeah, I'm waiting to hear back from Mass DOT about that. Their correspondent I got today from Sean Milligan was that he is waiting to hear back from folks and their boss in office regarding some financial questions we had at our last conference call. So they are not ready to schedule a meeting yet.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I have asked at Randy's, you know, request, to have the state rep contact Mass DOT in the district to facilitate that new meeting to get back on track.
Thank you. All right, the next thing I have is DPW brush program and white goods bulk items. Joe?
Waiting for the 18th, and then it looks like we'll switch it back over to the town.
Randy, no problem?
Yep, that's fine. We just have to figure out how the white goods and how we can get permits in people's hands. But as far as a brush goes, we'll be taking that as of next week.
You got it. How are we getting that news out to the citizens of the town of Southwick? It's something that could be handed out at the transfer station on Saturday or something like that? Or on the sign?
Yeah, we can, we... We can have the message board sign updated.
Okay.
And we can include that if Randy sends me whatever language he and Joe want to have in the Thursday evening updated joint statement that Tammy goes over with the Board of Health.
Very good.
Randy, that's all you.
You got it.
That's how to delegate, Mr. Diddy, that's how to delegate.
Carl, write that letter about the canoes, too.
I've already made a note about your wanting to have the canoes and car tops and paddle boats reviewed at a lower launch rate fee.
Thank you.
All right, next thing is the emergency rental assistant program. We're going to keep that on as an item to look at. And then we're going to go down to the building inspector to authorize the chairman and CAO to sign a letter of understanding with Kyle, Scott.
We have, we have an agreement in principle on the terms, and he's just finishing something today. So it looks like we're in good shape on that, within the parameters set by the governing board.
And he'll be able to complete the PAT? Kidding.
Yeah, I don't think that's necessary for building inspectors. But he'll nail test, I'm sure.
Hey, I did the rugged maniac with Mr. Lawler, correct?
And myself.
And you.
All right, if someone could make a motion to authorize the chair and CAO to complete that task?
I'll make a motion for that.
That's Doug Mogul.
Doug Mogul, yep.
Joe D, second. All in favor, roll call, vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe D, aye.
The only other thing I had under old business is we did receive the new flags that came out kind of to commemorate the ending of World War II. The flags are, actually, one is already at the town common, and it honors all veterans who have lost their lives. So if you're going by, that's one of the new flags. The other two flags, one will be at the old cemetery and one will be at the new cemetery. And people were very grateful that the select board funded that money through our gift account. Any other?
Right, the other, the other flag-related issue, Mr. Chairman, is we also did secure flags to be put in the graveyards for all of the veterans. And we secured those through the town of Agawam, and we gave them to one of the veterans groups last week, that they're having all their members go along, all the stones that are eligible, and putting the small little flags that meet the flag criteria that Gene Theroux gave us for those.
Okay.
So that was done, you know, with the help of our agent Rich Gerard, and we'll be having to go and backfill his supplies that he gave to us.
Right. Just an aside, our Graves officer, John Andrews, John's getting a little older, and maybe we should reach out to John to see if he needs assistance with that position. Make a note of that, Carl?
Yep.
Okay. Old business, Doug?
No, sir.
Mr. Diddy, old business? I see a shaking of the head, no. All right, we're going on to new business. Mr. Steinhardt?
Mine was the one related to the offer of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to help us apply for the green energy program. It's a $7,500 grant, and it's got a series of criteria that they would help us to work on, which is, of course, reviewing our existing bylaws and assessing in the development of new ones if needed, setting up, reviewing and entering data into a mass energy insight program, looking at the preparation of a energy reduction plan, drafting of a fuel-efficient vehicle policy or vehicle inventory, and then, you know, putting all those documents together. And you, of course, you know, in the past, the boards had study committees on this, and you were reluctant because of some of the issues that they were going to impose upon communities. But the stretch code already got incorporated into the building code. And I believe before the pandemic hit, you had been contemplating requesting a meeting with Brian Sullivan, who's now the director of that agency. And of course, he was the former mayor of Westfield.
All right, we did say that we were going to meet with Brian before we took any action. Would we still like to meet with Brian first before we take any action?
I would. And we met with him at MMA, and he was emphatic about having a meeting. So we said we would definitely be glad to meet with you, former mayor Sullivan. So I would, at some point, invite him to a future meeting, whether it's in person or not. Doesn't matter to me, but yeah. Before we would, I certainly wouldn't do it blindly because, you know, they still had the key requirement was especially as far as our pool cars and stuff. That could be a burdensome cost for the town of Southwick to not rotate through cruisers if we're unable to do that.
Okay. Mr. Diddy, any problems with tabling this till we've had a meeting with former mayor Sullivan?
We just get their hopes and dreams up, and then I crush them. I don't know why we both do this every three years. Sure, let's bring them in. The dog and pony joke, bring them in. But that is fault, just we don't, you're right, Doug. We don't fit a lot of the criteria, and we're not going to spend the money to make that work. We just never do.
And it always works, it's just like any other state program where they dangle a pot of money at you upfront to get you in, and then it ends up costing you a fortune. Like, I could see some, I could almost see it now because the energy program they're talking about, you could absolutely probably go right down College Highway and redo all those fixtures with LEDs, and we would own them, and it'd be great. And then, you know, we'll be stuck with another, you know, over the next several years of $100,000 worth of pool cars or whatever, because we can't rotate a cruiser through. So it's going to balance out, and it never works out right. So I'd love to see how this one's going to be different this time.
I closed my eye. I closed my eye and I hear Russ Fox saying unfunded mandate. That's all I hear. Unfunded mandate, unfunded mandate. This is no different.
All right.
We will contact his office to put him on a future agenda through the form.
Mr. Steinhardt, any other new business?
No, that was my new business item, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mogul, new business? Mr. Mogul, new business?
Seeing the warm reception that one got. No, none from me. Thank you.
Mr. Diddy, new business?
I've said enough. I'll say.
All right. With, with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn, and we'll see you all tomorrow. A motion to adjourn, Mr. Mogul?
Doug Mogul, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Joe D, the second.
Roll call, vote. Russ Fox, yes?
Doug Mogul, yes.
Joe D, the yes.
All right, we'll see you tomorrow.